All right, I'm going to call to order this meeting of the, this regular meeting on the Board of Directors of San Diego Community Power. It's September 24th and a bit after 5:00 PM. Let's do a roll call. I think Megan, is Megan on?
I am.
All right, Board Clerk, could you please do a roll call?
Yes, San Diego representative?
Here.
La Mesa representative? Imperial Beach representative?
Present.
Chula Vista representative?
Present.
And Samita's representative?
Present. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. Hand over heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, let's go to the agenda. I'm going to move, I'm actually going to, with the, with the okay of the, of the board, I'm going to move item number two up to number one spot and one, number one down to number two spot.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry, may I interrupt? Can I go back to the special meeting and report out that there was no reportable action taken by the board?
Yes, I apologize for that. All right, so that was your, your, your report from closed session?
Yes, the SDCP board, there was no reportable action. Thank you, I didn't want to interrupt the pledge of allegiance.
No problem, thank you for that, sorry, sorry I missed you there. But you know, we should put that on there in the, in the future if there's a, if there's a closed session, a report from the, from the general counsel on the closed session. Perfect, all right, so I'm going to move item number two up to number one spot and number one down to two spot. Are there any other changes to the agenda? All right, do we have any public comment, Board Clerk? I'm sorry, you're on mute, I can't hear you.
Sorry about that. We have two public, general public comments. And let me, one of them is, has been submitted, so I'll go ahead and read that one from Jason Anderson. Mr. Chairman and members, Clean Tech San Diego submitted a letter to you earlier today regarding the recent solicitation for renewable energy. In summary, after speaking with our members and learning about the projects that were not shortlisted, we are concerned that such a small number of local projects in San Diego and the Imperial Valley are being considered for this solicitation. We are very aware of the issues that SDCP is facing as you launch, including financial and regulatory. However, we urge you to not lose sight of SDCP's local renewable energy generation goals and the multiple benefits those goals will deliver to our region. We look forward to working with you to ensure that the unnecessary strategies and policies are in place so that those commitments become a reality. Our next public comment is Matthew Boss, and he is calling in, so Sebastian will assist with that one.
Thank you, Board Clerk Megan. At this point, Matt, are you on?
Yes.
Okay, give me one second. Okay, here we go.
So Joe's family and friends just want to let you know that we're proud of you publicly. I want to let everybody know that it's your birthday, so we're going to start singing. Happy birthday. We love you. Bye.
Thank you.
How about that sweater?
He still has it.
I've seen him with that tie on too.
Be very scared.
Blame you for this, you should never have let him through, no joking. Thank you. Yeah, no, that's awesome.
That includes general public comment.
All right, now I'm confused, like where am I now? Awesome thing.
Best board meeting ever.
I know, take that picture down. All right, we don't have a consent calendar, so therefore I'm going to move right to the, the action items. And we've moved the appointment of our interim CEO up to, up to number two, so I'm going to set this up. Appointment of interim CEO and approval of employment agreement. Recommendation is to adopt resolution appointing Bill Carnahan as interim chief executive officer and approving execution of an employment agreement with Mr. Carnahan and substantially the form attached here too, with non-substantive revisions approved by the chair and reviewed and approved as to form by general counsel. Our general counsel is here today with us to answer any questions if you have any questions. Also, Bill Carnahan is, has joined us, so if you have any questions, he'd be happy to answer any questions. So I just want to say a few words. I'm very excited to, to later introduce you to Bill, but to talk about this item, very excited to have this appointment before you today and the contract before you. Bill Carnahan is, is a highly experienced public utility leader. He has a lot of experience as a CCE, CCA executive. He served as interim CEO of Clean Power Alliance, which is the CCA up in Los Angeles and Ventura counties. He served up there from 2017 to 2018. In that time, he grew that CCA from three to 31 member cities. So it's a, it was a very large board, a very large organization. In fact, the, it is the largest organization right now in the state of California. He also served for, for many years as the executive director of the Southern California Power Authority. For those of you that don't know, Southern California Power Authority is one of the largest purchasers of, of power in our state and therefore in the nation. And he led that, that organization for some time. He also served as the director of public utilities for the city of Riverside for, for several years as well. So he's a really experienced utility, utility executive. He comes to us at a very critical time, we have a lot of issues going on and, and, and with launch. And so he's really an important person that, that is coming onto our team at a time where we're really focused on launch. And he's going to help us with that and help us build a team that moves us through to launch. The contract's also been, been worked out and it's, it's attached for your review. Just highlight some of the items there. The salary is $295,000 annually. It's a one-year term contract. Because he doesn't, he's not getting any benefits such as health insurance or pension, we did give him 15% in lieu of those benefits. There's a $500 a month allowance for automobile. So when, when we are back to meeting in person, he would be expected to be traveling to wherever we're meeting. $100 for technology allowance. Also, there would be, there will be an allowance in the future for housing. That's to be determined in the future when we actually start to meet in person. So again, very excited to, to have this item before you and to introduce you soon to Bill. And, and, and I think the contract is a very appropriate contract, and I hope that you'll approve this. And so let me turn it over to, to our general counsel or to Vice Chair Padilla if he has any comments to add.
Mr. Chairman, just appreciate the leadership and wholeheartedly concur, I'm excited about working with Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, you didn't adequate verbal summary that the Brown Act requires. I would just ask the secretary to please note the summary in the minutes, thank you.
Perfect. Any questions for myself, for, for the general counsel, or for Vice Chair Padilla, or for Bill Carnahan, who is, who, who is on the line with us? All right, not seeing. Are there any public comments on this item? Sorry Megan, you're on mute, so I couldn't.
Yes, sorry, there is one public comment, my apologies. The public comment is from Matthew Vassalakis. Good evening, Chair and Board members. On behalf of Climate Action Campaign, we look forward to working with the new interim CEO to do the critical work of launching the second largest CCA in the state of California. It's our hope that shortly after his appointment, Mr. Carnahan will meet with the Community Advisory Committee, civic, business, and community leaders and other key stakeholders to learn about our region's journey to public power and the vision for an inclusive, decentralized, 100% renewable energy future that is climate resilient and safe. Thank you. And that concludes the public comment.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. I made a brief mistake and we, we have two that was submitted before I sent it over to Megan. So if it's okay with you, I'd like to read it into public records since Megan doesn't have a copy of it.
Sure, please do.
Okay, one second please. This comment is from Tara Hammond. And she planned to submit a comment but does not wish to speak. And the comment reads as follows. Good evening, I was pleased to hear Cody Hooven was selected as the top candidate for the SDCP CEO role as her values and vision for SDCP align with, with what so many of us advocated for and hope our CCE program would offer. I am disappointed to hear that she isn't being given the opportunity to fill that role. I am hopeful that Mr. Carnahan has been made aware of key elements in the JPA which so many fought to include. Building local rooftop, creating programs which benefit communities of concern, paying families sustaining wages, offering rates lower than SDGNE rates, and innovative climate-related projects led by a community partner that supports our regional climate and equity goals. I encourage Mr. Carnahan to have meetings with the public to learn more on public community speeches for SDCP. And that concludes those comments, thank you.
Great comments, thank you. And I, and I agree with Tara insofar as, you know, those are values of this organization. And so this board is going to stand strong on those values in terms of 100% renewable energy, local, local energy projects, and, and really working with all of our stakeholders to make sure that, that they have a voice in this organization. And so I look forward to introducing our new interim executive officer to them as well at the Community Advisory Committee and other forums as well. So let's, I'm going to move that we adopt this resolution appointing Bill Carnahan as our interim executive officer and also approve the execution of the employment agreement with Mr. Carnahan substantially in the form attached here too.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second by Director West.
Board Member Montgomery, how do you vote?
I vote yes, welcome Bill, look forward to working with you.
Board Member West, how do you vote?
Welcome Bill, I'm excited for you, just like everybody seems to be excited tonight, today. So yes, look forward to working with you.
Board Member Hmora, how do you vote? Vice Chair Padilla, how do you vote?
Aye, welcome Bill.
Chair Mosca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all board members voting yes.
Great, awesome. So let me introduce you guys to Bill, several of you already have met Bill. But for the viewing audience, Bill Carnahan is on the line. And Bill, did you want to say a few words?
Yes, if I could just take a couple of minutes, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's truly an honor to be chosen to serve as your interim executive director and be able to serve the agency's, agency and its member cities. You represent, in my view, some of the finest progressive and forward-thinking cities in all of California by, by your efforts thus far. SDCPA has come a very long way in a relatively short period of time and has done it successfully with the help of a dedicated board that's supported by their local city councils, a small but energetic and dedicated staff members loaned by the cities to the agency, and expert consulting talent. For that, all of you should be very proud. However, much remains to be done, and I look forward to becoming a part of that team to help to successfully get us to the finish line. As your website says, "To create a path to 100% clean energy. As locally-controlled, not-for-profit energy provider while supporting economic vitality by providing cleaner energy at competitive rates and funding local renewable energy projects. I've had a fairly lengthy career in municipal electric joint-action agency and most recently the CCA world. I do it because I believe the principles and approach this assignment with a great deal of excitement and will pledge to work tirelessly on your behalf to do my part to assure success. Thank you all very much."
Thank you, Bill. Thank you so much for joining us and thank you for those words. I think that you guys can, can hear and see right there why we chose Bill. He's, he's, he's a critical leader for us at a, at a, at a really good time. So thank you, Bill, and, and look forward to working with you. Bill starts as of October 1st, but he's already rolled up his sleeves and has already started talking to folks and, and looking at what needs to be done.
Yes.
Perfect. All right, let's move actually to, we're going to go back to item number one on our agenda, which is the operations and administration report from our, from the interim executive officer Cody Hooven.
Great, thank you, pulling up my report here. Okay, so the first item we have on this monthly report is around staffing. So last month I shared with you all that we were moving forward with some recruitments. We have some pretty critical needs coming up specifically in a few areas. The areas of highest urgency and need for us are in the regulatory space and also in the, the power services space. So since the last meeting, we have put out two recruitments for directors in, in both of those areas. And true to kind of the values of our organization and, and what we hear as the intent of the board, we've distributed those announcements pretty broadly to our member cities, on our social media, through our networks and our mailing list, and also to a series of trade organizations that we listed in the staff report. And they include things like the Association of Women in Energy, the American Association of Blacks in Energy, Hispanics in Energy, and the National Utilities Diversity Council. And so we're seeing some pretty good responses to those. The positions close on Sunday, the 27th. So anybody watching or want to repost one more time for us, we'd appreciate that. And, and we're excited to have more hands on deck to help us, which is the theme of the evening, I'm very excited about that. And the next item we, sorry, actually to wrap that item up, item A in this report, we would like to move forward with a couple additional positions and I'll be working with Bill on those to update him and talk those through. On the next item, power resource solicitation, so we have, again, a couple of updates for you there. We, if you recall, are moving forward with both resource adequacy procurement and RPS procurement. And that's through a couple of mechanisms, both putting out our own procurements and our own solicitations as well as responding to SDGNE's RFOs, that's what they're called, request for offers. And so we're still working through on our own end. We put out actually a second resource adequacy RFO, and we're still working through a shortlist on our renewable power solicitations. In the response to SDGNE's solicitations, I mentioned this last time to you all, that we responded to their solicitation for RPS power and received back a notification that we were not selected for those power resources. And we followed up with a meeting and we feel that being a very large portion of their customer base and those power contracts procured on behalf of those customers that are now moving over to our services and through their stated intent to want to depart the procurement market or the procurement space, we felt that we'd like to revisit that and, and one, ask them why we weren't selected and two, see if there's any opportunity for an additional discussion. And, and they accepted that. And so we will be meeting later mid-October to continue those discussions. And hopefully those will be fruitful and we'll continue to keep you posted. On our response to their resource adequacy solicitation, we did just receive notice, I believe last week, that we were selected in their shortlist. So we will be moving forward those as well and we'll keep you posted on that. Those should be wrapped up fairly soon, probably in sometime in October. That's the, it for the summary on power resource solicitations. The third item, item C, is.
Can I interject a comment? Just connected to the, to the public comment tonight from Clean Tech San Diego, and they also sent us a letter. And I just want to publicly say that, that, that I think it's important that we're meeting with Clean Tech, they're an important stakeholder of ours and that we should be meeting with them to just kind of communicate with, with them, their board, and, and all of the folks around that table, that we are looking forward to collaborating with them, we do want to work with them. And though some of these solicitations may not include some of their energy developers, you know, in the future, we're certainly looking for more long-term power and we're looking to, to build more generation within San Diego region. And so we definitely want to partner with them. And I think it's important that, that you and Bill are, are meeting with Clean Tech to make sure that they're aware of our, our desire to work with them and, and that they shouldn't feel like they're shut out. But they're a part of, of this organization, we hear them.
Great, thank you, yes, I definitely appreciate their feedback and their input. And I, I probably join their meetings or meet with them multiple times a month. They're valuable stakeholders for us. I'll continue on to the next item, this one is just an update on our policy matrix. So if you recall, we, we attach this every, every month. And we have a series of just kind of housekeeping policies to complete. And we show you our progress, what's, what's actually in progress, what's been completed, and what we think is upcoming. So I won't spend really a lot of time on that, but the, the few that are maybe most interesting are both the bid evaluation criteria, that's something that we're working on to look at how to evaluate our bids, and inclusive and sustainable workforce policy, which we are working on, would like to bring to our committees and eventually to this board. As well as, we have invited Calpine to come and present to you all and maybe at the next meeting or so around some of the policies that they're going to be helping us with that relate to our customers. So things like terms of, terms and conditions and of enrollment and a net energy metering policy and those types of things. So lots, lots to come, just giving you a quick update there. And then we have an item on discussions with San Diego Gas and Electric and other regulatory items is a broad category. And so further discussions on San Diego Gas and Electric relate to enrollment in our schedules. So another item that we've been keeping you up to date on. They initially had approached us back in July and had said that the schedule that we had filed in our implementation plan to the state and had been committed to for quite some time now, that would not work for them. And we immediately began meeting with them to discuss that. And we've made some significant operational and financial decisions based on the schedule that we've laid out, both the phasing schedule and the load and accounts that, that go along with that schedule. And, and we've been working through that with them and they are agreeing to be collaborative. And we've gone back and forth on revising some of our accounts to match their needs, but maintaining both the schedule that we've originally set, which starts in March of next year, and then also keeping, making sure that it aligns with our financial and operational needs. So once we come to a resolution there, we'll be updating this board with that information. And then the last item is regulatory, and this, we've been quite active in this space and there's a lot more I think we, we have to do here. And Ty Tossel, our regulatory counsel, is on, on the Zoom. So I'm going to turn it over to him to give you some highlights.
Thanks Cody, appreciate it. Good afternoon, Board Members. We have been very active lately on the regulatory front, and so I want to go through some of the highlights. Obviously, there's too much to report with respect to everything that we're doing, but we, we certainly have been doing quite a bit. First item I want to cover concerns the disconnections decision that was issued by the Public Utilities Commission earlier this year. And the investor in utilities, including SDGNE, have issued advice letters addressing a significant part of that decision, which is specifically referred to as the arerage management plan. The disconnections decision that was passed by the, by the commission earlier this year sought to address access to power for low-income earners and other people that may not be able to make their payments on a regular basis for, for various reasons. And it sought to limit the number of people who are disconnected, among other things. And so the utilities have been participating in a working group along with our trade association, CAL CCA, and individual CCA programs to give around some of the details of, of that arerage management program. The arerage management program specifically addresses debt forgiveness. And so customers are permitted to, SDGNE customers are, as long as they meet certain requirements and make a number of on-time payments, they will have part of their debt obligation forgiven, up to $8,000. This may affect CCA program revenues. I think certainly my, my understanding is that, at least is that, you know, many in the CCA program community share the goals of the commission and, and making sure that people do have access to power and aren't disconnected due to lack of payment. Nevertheless, you need to pay close attention to how the, this particular program is implemented. So we have been reviewing an advice letter, which was issued by SDGNE on its arerage management plan, proposing the implementation details. We, we are working with CAL CCA in this and we are planning to respond with concerns primarily clarifications and requests for supplemental information to make sure that the, the debt forgiveness is accessible to the, the CCA program. And what I mean by that is, and the process that the IOUs have worked out in the working group is that they are going to forgive the debt of the customers who meet the criteria. And they're going to collect that revenue shortfall from all the remaining customers through what's called the public purpose program charge. You know, one of our concerns is how then the, the debt forgiveness that's collected for CCA program customers is recovered and remitted to CCA programs. So we are planning to, to work with CAL CCA. We are currently doing so to develop a response that will be filed next week. I, I did want to underscore one thing and that, that is, to the extent that the board and the management decide that we want to participate in this program, it does require a notice to the utility that we are planning to participate. And so we can, we can submit that notice. And there's a short time period that needs to transpire before our customers can actually participate. So at, before launch, certainly the, there should be a decision made about whether we want to participate. And it would certainly be my recommendation that we do, and we would have to make formal notice to SDGNE. In addition to that, we've discussed this, you know, at some length. But you'll remember that SDGNE has filed what's called a PCI A trigger application. This stems from a PCI A decision that was issued in 2018. A number of methodological changes were made to the PCI A, the power charging difference adjustment, which SECB customers will be paying. And the, included in those methodological changes were the adoption of a cap and trigger. The cap provided some year-over-year relief from the PCI A to protect against rate volatility. The trigger was put in place in order to make sure that if those under collections reached a certain level, 7% of anticipated PCI revenues sorry, PCI revenues, that the utilities had a mechanism to recover those amounts. That, that design, that, that element of the rate design or the design, the charge design has proved to be somewhat problematic. This is the first year that the utilities are able to file, that the, the cap was put in place and that utilities are able to file the trigger applications. SDGNE hit the trigger right away, which was not anticipated when the decision was issued. And what I'm, what I'm told is that a lot of people are expecting trigger applications to be filed by the other investor-owned utilities as well. So we are actively participating in that proceeding to figure out how best to deal with that. As it stands, this is not something that will likely affect SDCP customers. This is an issue for this year's CCA customers. But based on how quickly the cap was reached and the fact that all three investor-owned utilities are reaching it, we're expecting this to continue to happen year-over-year as long as the cap and trigger are in place. So one of the issues that's emerged out of, out of this process is whether to do away with the cap and trigger. It's something that I, we have been discussing extensively internally with Ms. Hooven, with my staff, with other staff members at SDCP. And trying to determine what the best course of action is in the proceeding. However, this raises a pretty significant. However, this raises a pretty significant policy issue for, for the board around the cap and trigger and how we want to approach it. And so I think Ms. Hoven and I will be, and Mr. Carnahan as well, will be working toward developing a position. We are certainly in consultation with CALCCA about this. And we understand that there, there have been a lot of discussions about that at the board level with other CCA programs in terms of taking a, a position as a CCA community. So certainly, you know, the PCI continues to be a big issue and problematic issue for CCA programs. And I wanted to make sure that, you know, the board had all the current information. And certainly, I think that this issue around the cap and trigger is going to come to a head sooner rather than later. We are, we are expecting PG&E to file a petition for modification to remove the cap on the PCI. We won't, we have not seen that, but that is the expectation out there. And, and so if that, if that occurs, then we will be fighting, certainly, we will certainly file a, a response to that petition. But long story short, I think that this issue is going to, going to be top of mind and, and going to be addressed in the near term. There was a comment made sort of off the cuff at a recent Public Utilities Commission by Commissioner Guzmanisevez that the PCI cap and trigger may need to be revisited. That was framed in, in terms of, you know, a burden on bundled customers due to departed load and CCA program customers, you know, leaving the utility. So I, I just, do you want to stress that this, this is going to be, I think, a high priority issue over the next couple of months? And let me stop there, see if there are any questions about that. I've got a couple of other items that I want to report on. But since that is such a high-profile issue, I do want to stop and see if anybody has any questions about that.
Did anybody have any questions for Ty on that item? I do think, Ty, that, that probably, I think what you had recommended about meeting with Bill and Cody and working this out and coming to the board in terms of, with a recommendation and an item where we actually engage in a full-on policy discussion on this item would be good. But do any, does anybody have any questions for Ty on this specific item? All right.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Also, the, we are also, we're tracking the SCG&E era forecast proceeding. STCP does have a separate council involved in that. And we've been working closely with them to just get reports on what's happening in that, in that proceeding. Briefs are due tomorrow, so I'll have some more information for you at the next meeting about the substance of the briefing. That again is where the PCI rate is set for the next year. So it is a regular annual proceeding that, that we will be engaged in presumably each year. So we'll be regularly hearing about that. And then finally, SCG&E submitted a separate advice letter seeking approval and cost recovery and cost recovery methods for what's, what's called backstop procurement. And it was a, there was a decision issued in the, in integrated resource plan proceeding last year, which was, I think it's fair to say, heavily criticized for the way it was ushered through the commission. But it was all done in very short order. But long story short, it, it instructed the load-serving entities, the IOUs, the CCA programs and the DA providers to increase their procurement of system resource adequacy. And it also extended the life of the ones through cooling plants, like the, the one in Carlsbad. And although that one's not, wasn't part of the decision, but it's that type of facility. And this, this, this decision in the IRP proceeding left, leaves STCP in, in an awkward position. The decision ordered all the load-serving entities, all the energy providers to procure excess resources, but it did not afford any opportunity for new CCA programs that were formed after that date to, to buy their own power. And so I think, you know, from my standpoint, there is some lack of foresight there. So SCG&E is moving forward with buying all the, you know, the power that was ordered by the, the commission. But as everybody here knows, SCG&E will be losing a substantial number of customers to STCP and CEA next year. And, and so with respect to that advice letter, we are planning to move, move ahead and file a response or a protest. And we'll certainly be raising the issue of, of, you know, whether we should have an opportunity to self-procure or procure for, for that resource requirement down, down the road. So I think this is, you know, one of those, another one of those, those issues that is difficult and due to timing and the startup process. But we'll see if we can get some sort of relief on that as well. And that concludes my report. Have any answer any questions?
Excellent. Any questions for Ty or for Cody?
I have a question for, for Ty.
Yes, Director West.
So that last part of the discussion you were having, where we were, we would become the, get the ability to actually procure that energy. I think that's a very interesting, how long, how, if we were to, if that was to move forward, how long did it take to get an answer or a, to that become reality?
Well, Director West, I appreciate the question. The, it's a little bit of a difficult.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. No, I didn't mean to interrupt. Go ahead.
It's a little bit of a difficult issue because the, the, the projects have to be online by August 1, 2021. And that's a very, you know, in the, in the world of, of resource planning and, you know, energy sector, that's, that's tomorrow. That's a very short period of time, right? So that's, that's, that's one of the difficulties. I think we'll, to your question, I think we'll get a, a response relatively soon, although the commission's not bound by any sort of time period. But I would expect that we would get a response on that, certainly before the end of the year. It's hard to predict, you know, exactly when we would get a response to that. I, I do think that this situation that we find ourselves in really does underscore the need for the portfolio management measures that are supposed to be part of the PCI proceeding to move forward. And for programs like STCP to have the opportunity to access some of the resources within SCG&E's portfolio, you know, now that they're going to be downsizing in their customer base. So the, you know, there are different mechanisms that are under discussion as part of the, currently under discussion as part of the PCI proceeding, you know, assigning contracts, allocations of, of power in the, in the utility portfolios. To, from my perspective, you know, the, the situation that we find ourselves in with respect to this backstop procurement ruling really underscores the need for that process to move forward so that our, our program can have an opportunity to access those resources.
Yeah, Mr. Tossel, I, I am 100% agreeable with what you're discussing there. And I would eagerly like to remain engaged on this to, to ensure that we're, this is moving forward at some point. Thank you.
Excellent points. Excellent point. All right. Let's, if there are no other questions. Board, Madam Board Clerk, is there, are there any public comments on item one?
Chair Mosca, I have one more question. I'm sorry.
Yes, Director West.
Um, it really goes back to something I asked last board meeting was, if we were able to obtain, and this is for Ms. Hoven, if we were able to obtain from a, from SCG&E a written schedule of the, of their rollout of the, the new billing process, did we get anything from them? I know we had discussions, but we received something in writing so we can make sure that it, it meets all our timelines.
We have not yet. And what we've decided to do is just propose to them something in writing. And we're, we plan to share that with them probably in the next week or so.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And Director West, some of those conversations are merging into the conversations on these solicitations. And so, you know, obviously, our goal is to, to launch when we said we're going to launch. And, and, and also work with them on the procurement of some of the power that they purchased for our, our customers, our mutual customers, our mutual ratepayers. And so hopefully, hopefully, we're, we're staying on course. But there, there are also opportunities for collaboration to work at something that makes sense for both SDG&E and STCP in this, in this situation.
Yeah, I agree completely, Chair Mosca. I'm just, I was just, it's something I asked for in the last one. I just wanted to make sure that it was, it's something that wasn't forgotten. And obviously, it wasn't. You guys have been talking about it. And I appreciate the update there, Chair. And I just want to, I want to make sure that we are collaborating on both sides to make sure that we're meeting goals for everyone. And, and I think that those are, those are great things. So thank you.
I, I think in the beginning, it seemed like we're kind of like passing ships, if you will. You know, SDG&E is saying, you know, this is, this is when we're going to, this is when we can launch because this is CIS. And we're saying, no, this is when, you know, state law says this and this is what we're following. And we've, we've followed every step and here's, here's our timeline. So it's kind of, I think we're still, we're, we're still in some ways paralleling each other, but we're also starting to work together to make sure that we're, we're, you know, we're meeting.
Great. Thank you.
Makes sense. So, all right. Any other questions for, for Ty or for Cody? And then Megan, did you, did you say there were no public comments on this item?
Correct. There's no public comments.
All right. Perfect. Let's receive and file those reports. And we will move on to, we will move on to item number three, approval of CEO job description and initial STCP organizational chart. And I think our general counsel, Ryan Baron, will take this item.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. In light of the other item, in conjunction with the employment agreement for the interim CEO, the general counsel is recommending that your board adopt a formal job description for the interim CEO and an initial organizational chart to assist the CEO in performing the initial hiring for STCP. And on that, I'm going to turn it over to Assistant General Counsel Nick Norvell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and board members. So just to go through some of the details very briefly. Consistent with the agency's joint powers agreement, the proposed job description provides that the CEO's responsibility would include, but not be limited to, responsibility for day-to-day operation and management of the agency and its CCA program. That includes overseeing the administration, finance, staffing, marketing, public affairs, power, planning and procurement, supply operations, local energy programs, and legislative and regulatory affairs. The proposed duties of the CEO would include hiring other STCP staff, including other executive staff of the agency, who would have specific responsibilities over a particular operational, administrative, and financial activities of STCP as determined by the CEO. And the recommended action would allow the board to make changes to the CEO job description in the future, if appropriate or necessary in the, the discretion of the board. Turning to the second aspect of this item, it is an organizational chart to assist the interim CEO with initial hiring and staffing. Our office conducted an independent review of the management structure of other large CCA JPAs in California, in particular Clean Power Alliance and Central Coast Community Energy, which was formerly Monterey. And we prepared a proposed draft organizational chart for the board's review and approval. The organizational chart would help, as I mentioned, guide the interim CEO in, in planning and doing some initial hiring. The proposed chart envisions two positions, which you'd report directly to the CEO, a chief operating officer position and a chief financial and administrative officer position. The COO's duties would include oversight and management responsibility over power planning and procurement, customer programs, legislative and regulatory affairs, and communications and outreach. And the CFO, CAO's duties would include oversight and management responsibility for finances and rates, human resources, and then information technology. And I will acknowledge many of these roles and some of the items mentioned, they may be performed for a period of time by outside consultants that'll provide those services to, to the agency. But eventually, we would anticipate that they would be hired in-house. But this kind of provides flexibility to fill out the details of the organization. And those COO and CFO, CAO positions, below them would be directors, managers, or other staff as determined by the CEO. So the recommended action would adopt the initial organization chart for STCP. And it would allow the interim CEO and the permanent CEO eventually to make changes to that organizational chart, provided that he or she comes back to the board and provides an update to you about those organizational changes. So, and just to briefly mention, that's consistent with the job description we prepared, which provides the, the responsibility for hiring to the CEO. So it ultimately be the CEO's determination of how positions are structured, how hiring is done, who reports to whom, et cetera.
And on that note, I just wanted to mention that in our conversations with Mr. Carnahan during the interview process, it was, it's his intent, even with the delegated authority, that he, he wants to keep the board informed of any changes to this organizational structure and bring it back to your approval, regardless of what delegated authority you provide.
Very good. Thank you, Ryan. Thank, thank you, Nicholas. I think that the, the key term here is initial. This is the initial organizational chart. I think that's important. I think that, that with our, you know, kind of incoming interim chief executive officer, he should have the, the ability to, and have the flexibility to, to put together an organization that's going to help us launch and help us reach all of our goals. And so the board really has all the confidence in, in Bill Carnahan to do that. And so this is just an initial organizational chart. But it is, it's not etched in stone and it can be changed. And so I, I would imagine in the future that, that Bill and the senior, his senior team will, will bring together, will bring us, you know, adjustments as, as they see fit. Any questions for Ryan or for Nicholas? I don't actually see everybody, so, and I can't see if you raise your hand. So shout out if you have any comments. If not, I'm going to say thank you to Ryan, Nicholas, for, for putting these items together. And I will move approval of this item.
So moved.
All right. We have a, and a second by Director West. And we will now vote.
Board member West, how do you vote?
I vote vote yes, yes.
Sorry. Board member Montgomery, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board member Himmora, how do you vote? I didn't, sorry. Board member Himmora, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Chair Padia, how do you vote?
I apologize. I should have noted this for the record. Vice Chair Padia is not feeling well, so he's left our meeting.
Oh, thank you. Chair Mosca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all board members voting yes.
All right. Let's move to the next item. And that is approval of the San Diego Community Power brand messaging and logo. And I guess, is that, Cody, are you taking this item? Or do we have anybody on from Civilian?
We, we do, but I'm going to take my prerogative and introduce Sean because I'm pretty proud of this work that they've been doing. So we brought, go ahead.
You're saying you should be because they've been great. So.
Yeah. We brought, yes, we brought Civilian. And they put together a great team and we brought them on a few months ago now, I think. And, and, you know, it was a little bit of a leap of faith because they haven't worked on a CCA before. And, but they have just been proving themselves again and again that they were the right choice. They're a local firm and a B Corporation, which is all very exciting things and aligned with who we are and our values and our mission. And so this is a exciting, it's maybe relatively small in the grand scheme of things, but such a tangible presentation and, and item for us to discuss. So I'm going to, I'm going to stop there. I just wanted to give that little introduction. So I'm going to hand it over to you now, Sean, with Civilian. So I'm going to hand it over to you now, Sean, with Civilian.
Thanks for the intro, Cody, and thanks, everyone, Board Chair and members of the board for giving us your time again this evening. Good to see you again. Good to meet you last, last month. Sebastian, if we can kind of start scrolling through the slides. Last time when we first met in August, we kind of laid out a path for how we were going to build out the plan and how we're going to get, get you to market from a marketing standpoint. What's nice is, one month later, we're here showing you some work. So we're excited to kind of show off kind of our process and how we landed where we are. The agenda for today on the next slide is, we are going to, oh, look at the double bullets there. We're going to share with you our message platform and some different tiers involved with that. We're also going to share with you the first component of the brand identity, which is the logo. And then we'll talk through some next steps. I'm going to take you through the slides in a pretty quick fashion, and we'll have time for questions at the end of it. But just so you know, also joining me today is Kim Koots, who is our Director of Strategy and Outreach. And some of you have met with her and worked with her so far. So she was the architect of a lot of this thinking. So if you have any in-depth questions, she will be your gal to answer them as we go through this. But first up, let's start with the messaging platform. Oh, you know what? I'm sorry, we're going to go with our approach first. We bring this slide to everyone just to make sure that it's clear that we have a process for this. We tend to take in as much input as possible and then wean our way down toward a recommendation as we go through. So the discovery process that you were involved in last month was us soliciting information from a variety of sources, both looking at industry standards for all the other CCAs that are part of CalCCA, what's worked for them, what hasn't worked for them. Us just looking at the landscape in general and applying general marketing best practices. We also did a series of listening sessions. So we, we asked a lot of questions about what it, what it takes to make a great brand and what, what SDCP should represent here in San Diego. We asked the Community Advisory Committee, we met with you, we met with city staff, kind of, and we've been working, obviously, in lockstep with the SDCP staff team. All of that has led us to a place where we are right now, where we're going to be looking at our logo as well as our platform draft. Let's start with messaging. And one thing to bear in mind as we go through all of this is, we start big and then kind of drill our way down here. So what we consider most critical in a message platform, the objectives of the message platform, Sebastian, is first and foremost, to support the business goals and objectives that we have for San Diego Community Power to ensure that when we do roll out this program across the various audiences, that we are minimizing opt-outs, maximizing opt-ups, and building a platform and a foundation for future growth. We do want to very clearly and simply communicate the benefits of SDCP and a CCA in general. It's really critical, we talked about this last time, to establish credibility and trust. We want to make sure that the customers who are being introduced to the notion of a CCA for the first time have utmost confidence that we will deliver flawlessly for them. We also want to position SDCP specifically as a regional thought leader for CCA because this is such a huge market, and there's so much at stake. We want to, we want to, again, spark that confidence from the beginning. And a lot of what we talked about last month, we're establishing what the current perceptions of CCAs in general, or Community Power in specific here in San Diego, what those perceptions are, whether there are perceptions, right? There's, there's an awareness issue that we want to get past as well. And there might be some, some lingering credibility issues based on campaigns of the past. So we want to understand what those current perceptions are so that we can drive them to a better place where we want to be. So those are the goals of this positioning. And we can start, like I mentioned, large, large-scale, big picture with a, sort of what we call an umbrella positioning statement, which should be on the next slide here. As a neighborhood not-for-profit, San Diego Community Power provides future-focused energy choices and a clear path to 100% renewable energy for today and as a legacy for future generations. This is sort of our, you can call it our mission statement from a marketing standpoint. This, this is going to guide every piece of communication that we move forward with. It's sort of our end-to-end positioning. And what we do is, we start with this large umbrella statement, and then, as mentioned before, we kind of build our way down. So you can see in the next slide, we take that large sales statement, and then we break it up into a series of messaging zones. And each of these four quadrants represent a different line of arguments that we're going to want to deploy depending on who we're talking to, what the context of the discussion will be, and what the communication that we want to get out of it is. So those zones are basically arguments and conversations about San Diego Community Power. It's, it's major benefits. It's customer-driven choice. It's future-focused, pragmatic and proven, and it's a neighborhood not-for-profit. So what we're going to do now is, we're going to start to get a little bit deeper. Again, we're going to start chipping away, go lower and lower down the totem pole to get more and more specific with what these messages and what their underlying proof points are. So if we go to the next slide, we'll see that we take that customer-driven choice notion and drill it down into a series of messages. So again, we're getting, we're getting more and more tactical, more and more specific as we go. Customer, so why is customer-driven choice a good thing? Well, it creates benefits for ratepayers. It's open and accountable. It allows customers to choose the package that's best for them, and it'll also impact community reinvestment. So each of these sections, I'm not going to go too deep into this, given the context right now, but each of these will have probably four to six individual proof points that can all find their way into a piece of collateral or a talking points in a speech or whatever we need them to be. We'll go to the next one, future-focused. So why is, why is SDCP being future-focused a good thing? Sources and provides cleaner energy, clear as day right there. The first, the first CCA to put in the JPA a commitment to 100% renewable energy by 2035 or sooner. Healthier communities today in the future, and also enabling member cities and also our business customers to reach their own climate action goals. So again, these are all the sub-arguments that sort of deliver why future focus is so important. Let's talk about proven and pragmatic. In a lot of ways, this is a, this is a territory that's as much about establishing credibility about CCAs in general. Because the truth is, we are not the first CCA out there. There is a track record of positive delivery of CCAs across the state and across the country, frankly. So they are not new. We are not the first. We've seen success. We know what success looks like, and we're building toward that. We are, we are leaning on all the learnings from all the other CCAs coming through us so far. There's a really great jobs message in here. Clean tech is, as we know, booming. It's not, if not the number one, then the number two growing sector in the state. So there's a really great jobs message there. It also supports overall community economic vitality based on the local projects and local programs that SDCP offers. And then finally, just the benefit that pragmatically, you can save money as a customer. But even by doing that, because of the fact that you're using clean energy, you're also helping the environment. So it's a very practical message as well. Finally, from a not-for-profit standpoint, this is really drilling into the local nature of it. It's never taxpayer-funded. It's a not-for-profit service. It's run locally, and it's very community-focused. And there's no corporate interests, or there's no higher-level decision-maker that's driving what products we offer, how we generate our energy, how we build programs to help the community. And just a general census, too, you are making decisions and supporting an energy provider that not only gives you utility as a customer, but also creates social good and benefits the environment. So as we go to the next slide, again, I'm just going to pull back a little bit. All of these message zones dial into that overall umbrella positioning statement, and each of them are going to have a series of sub-proof points that we're working through with the SDCP staff. And I think we're actually going to try to potentially put some of those proof points in front of the CAC in a couple of weeks because they're very policy-focused and they, and they love getting in the weeds. So we want to kind of talk on those terms with them and get, and get the best possible, strongest proof points available. I'm going to keep, keep kind of chugging through this. Next up, we have the brand identity. So similar to the messaging platform, there's a process, and we start big and work our way in. So from the brand identity standpoint, the first thing that we did was look at what our direction is, will be for this, what we need to get out of it. We need to build a branding campaign which educates constituents about clean energy and sparks a sense of collective pride for the difference we can make as a community. You may recall on the next slide that we had a conversation last time about what our brand attributes are. That series, that handful of words, that if you distill the entire, if you take the entire brand, boil it down to its lowest common denominator, what does it need to represent? Proud, trustworthy, fresh, local visionary. If the identity, the logo, the platform, the campaign doesn't deliver these five terms that we have failed. So this is what we measure ourselves up against. So once we have that direction, we then went and did some, some category research. So the first place we looked was, all the other industry brands out there. We looked at the landscape. We looked at all the other brands that are out here in California right now. And what you'll notice here, a lot of times when it comes to brand identity, we will look at logos in black and white or grayscale first because we want to understand what the concept and the meaning behind them is, and then we apply color. We try to avoid distractions of color when we look at what the concept or story behind the logo is. What do we see here? We see some variance, but we also see a lot of similarities. We see a lot of suns. We see a lot of leaves and a lot of light bulbs. Because that's pretty clear across the CCAs that, yes, it makes sense. We are using natural energy to supply power. That's a very clear statement. What we, what we think about when we see these and we analyze all the competitive is, you know, do we want San Diego Community Power to fall in line with these? Or do we want it to represent something different? And if we want to represent something different, we want to have really good rationale for why that's the case. Because in reality, it's not as if many residents of San Diego will have brand affinity for one of these other market CCAs. It's not like they're direct competition. It's just more of a landscape. So once we look at the stories behind them, on the next slide, what we do is, we, we bring the color back, and we look at what the color schemes are for all of these logos. What you'll see here is, again, it's pretty intuitive. We're talking about clean energy. There's a lot of green and a lot of blue, and sort of a sea of sameness. So again, the question that we ask ourselves is, do we want to be within this? Do we want to be adjacent to it, or do we want to be different for it? And if we're different, then we want to have a good reason why. So we've done all that research. We put these competitive slides together, and then what we go into what we call a mood board process. So we provided a series of mood boards to the SDCP staff that really serve as inspiration. Sort of what's the overall tone and takeaway, and what do we, what do we feel the general aesthetic for this brand should be? The mood board that we settled on, this one is, we labeled it as form follows function, which basically means simplicity overall. If we can create a sense of confidence and simplicity about the services that SDCP provides, that right there is showing you professionalism. That you don't have to be stark to be professional. You can be simple. You can be lowest common denominator. And a lot of, a lot of the brands that people trust more than anything else in the world are very simple when it comes to their brand identity. The next page is a continuation of this. How can we use simple shapes, simple graphics? Also, taking a look at what, what we see around us in San Diego, there's a lot of very simple, clean images that are out there. We took all this as inspiration. We shared, I think, three or four different mood boards and the SDCP staff that aligned with us on which one they want to pursue. So again, each step, we're getting closer and closer to where we want to land. Finally, the next, next slide up is, we're going to tee up the actual logo itself. So we shared, I believe, four different logo concepts with the staff. We left another 15 or so on the cutting room floor before we put it in front of them. And as I mentioned before, when we first start sharing it, we look at a black and white version. So the next slide, you'll see the black and white version of our recommended logo. San Diego Community Power. It's very simple, very powerful. There is a notion of a charged fuel cell or a charged battery. There's a notion of power. What you'll notice is, you look at that battery being charged on those dials right there, there are five of them. There are five founding member cities of San Diego Community Power. So the idea behind this is the power of these five founding cities coming together to create something for the community. And we just love that. We love the simplicity of it. We thought that there's more power in a visual that evokes power through unity necessarily than showing a tree or a light bulb or how wind works, because this is, this feels like something bigger. What we do next is, we then apply color to it. So if you look at the next slide, this is where we see the colors representing each of the five member cities come to life in a really interesting colorways. So each of those, if we, if we break them down, each of them has a tie back to one of the member cities in your core sort of brand. This allows us a lot of legs in the future. If, if in the future we decide it's appropriate, we could version this out for individual city versions. We could treat these colors in a lot of different ways. If, if we need to expand in the future, if we bring in the county, or if we bring in other cities, they certainly will fit within this. We don't necessarily, that doesn't mean that we need to expand the number of cities. This is an homage to those founding cities that took the plunge together to create San Diego Community Power. And again, it's one of those things where you don't know that story until you hear it. But once you hear it, you get a little pride in it, and it has meaning for you. So this is our logo recommendation. Our next step after we get through this is to build it out in a variety of ways, create our ad campaign, everything. But it all starts right here with this brand identity. I think that's what we, I think that's the end of our slides, and I can take some questions at this point.
Wow, Sean, excellent. Thank you for all of that information. Can you go back to that slide?
Sure.
So we can put that, keep that up. Can you, can you, once again, just talk about the, the, the kind of the circle there, what it represents?
Yeah, so, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Sorry, say again?
So the, the middle is like, is the electricity.
Exactly. So, so what you might remember from the mood boards that we looked at, we looked at using simple shapes to create, to create imagery. So instead of having a, an expected sort of lightning bolt to represent energy, we, that's just two triangles that happen to be lined up there. So we're using two simple shapes to create a notion of power. And the other thing that we had in consideration with this was, you, sorry, the, the, the organization chose its name very carefully, San Diego Community Power. There were a lot of very clear boxes that you checked with the name itself. So we thought through the icon and through the mark here, you don't necessarily need to double up on those. So the notion of clean energy, the notion of community, you don't, you don't need to restate them. What you can instead state is how five things come together to create something powerful. And that's what this logo represents to us. It represents a power company because we're looking at something that feels like a battery or a fuel cell. You could also see it as an engine being revved. So as we build toward the future, that's, that's the direction that we're going in. Yeah, I think, I think that kind of goes the question.
And is that, I mean, in terms of the sun, you see a lot of, in a lot of the logos, there's some, some, some indication of sun. Is this also, you see as, as the roundness as also, as the sun as well?
I think so. I think that's one of the things about just the reality of logos and branding in general is, people will take a logo and create their own backstory to it. So as you accept it and as you, as you kind of find your own meaning to it, it may, there may be something in there that other folks may not necessarily see. I mean, yes, sorry, the, the roundness of it definitely sort of nods toward the sun, but we didn't want to be too overt with it. Because I think one of the challenges that we had was, if you start to isolate one form of energy, then it's like, oh, well, what about hydroelectric? What about wind? What about? And then, and then you start, end up having a logo that has five or six different energy generation sources all in one place, and then it becomes a little too, a little too busy for our taste.
So then what about the San Diego and then Community Power? Is that going to be the, is that what you're proposing for the color?
It is, it is. Like, like I mentioned earlier, we may end up playing with some versioning of this. So there may be a way for us to isolate it based on the city that's, that's, that's recommending it. One conversation that we had with staff earlier was whether San Diego or Community Power are the most prominent pieces there. And because we know that this is a coalition of five cities, we really wanted to emphasize over everything else, Community Power. We feel that the color and the accents on the dial itself are a really interesting pop of color. And we don't necessarily feel that, like, those, those big, bold letters, Community Power, we don't necessarily think that they need color to add to them because they're, they're such strong typography, and the layout is so strong that I'd almost rather have those colors represented in the cities on the dial do the justice and be our color pop or kind of accent piece.
All right. Interesting that you call it a dial, because it kind of looks like a dial.
Yeah, it could be a dial. It could be a speedometer. It could be a battery. It could be a fuel cell. It could be a lot of things. I mean, what I see is I-
When I dial, I think of those old-school-like stoves, stover, like that where you turn the dial.
Yeah, it's one of the things that we wanted to do. Well, yeah, not necessarily. I definitely don't think it's, it's like a, like a gas gauge turning on. One of the things that we wanted to do was figure out how to take that simplicity, that mood board, and represent motion. And we tried to figure out, how can you show motion simply? And we thought that this was a really clever way to do it. You're actually using the color scheme to show motion. I, I can almost feel that going from, from point A down to point B, from, you know, from 11 o'clock to four o'clock. It feels like there's motion there, even though there's no actual motion happening.
Good. Yeah, no, I think this is, this is nice. Any other comments or questions for Sean and Kim?
This is Director West. I have a few questions. So, yeah, I totally get the whole battery charge thing there. It's, you know, both of my electric cars kind of have something very similar to that. The only thing I'm, I'm wondering a couple of things. One, first of all, in the, the quad charts that you had for each one of the breakdowns, I'm wondering if there's a point where you could put in something that says about environmental justice in there or environmental. And it is something that all of us are working on in each one of our cities, and I think it might be something to include as well on one of the, you know what I'm talking about on your quad charts?
Absolutely. I can guarantee that environmental justice plays a role there. I'm flipping through my notes right now. I don't know, Kim, if you wanted to address where that, where that lives.
It does. We have a lot of that data, and particularly some both from forward-looking as well as some stuff that's already happening from CCAs around the state in the proof points. I think we just, we need to figure out how much info you need at some point, but we'll make sure that it's in there for sure because it is important to us as well. And it's definitely in the proof points right now. And if we need to punch that message up a little bit more, we absolutely can.
I would like to see that for sure. So, and then, and then also on the, so if I was to take this brief to my city and give an update, can we, I mean, I know our, our name of our organization is San Diego Community Power, but could we tailor this, like, for instance, on the, the, how this slide is set up? Could you- Could you, could you swap out the cities? So we're like, when, if I go to in brief Imperial Beach and you could say Imperial Beach Community Power, but still have the San Diego Community Power down there in the, in the lower hand corner? So it can be kind of tailored to really fit those cities. Can that be done as we do briefs and move forward with this?
I can tell you-
Do you understand what I'm saying?
No, I do. I can tell you it's definitely can happen because we've done it. We actually, we, a previous version of this had that in there. I think we wanted to try to distill it down and not provide too many distractions in the presentation today. But we, we do have versions of this logo that are city specific with a call out to each of the cities. Think of it as like below the word power, a little bar that would say like City of La Mesa, City of Encinitas. And then the, the color scheme would be focused on the orange or the blue based on the corresponding city. So yeah, there'd be customized versions of this.
You are reading my mind. That's exactly what I wanted to hear. So, and then last but not least, okay, so as an, as a, as a guy who's totally into the battery power and electric charging, I mean, I've got it all over my house. I've got, the only thing that I think is missing here is our commitment to, one of the things that makes San Diego so amazing, and it's, there's many things, but I have a, I have a strong passion of going to the ocean. And I was wondering, you know, I'm kind of, I kind of was hoping to see someplace a little wave in there too. And so I don't know about the rest of the board and, and I will defer a little bit to them. But I, I really think we, I would like to see a wave at some point on this because I think that that's super important to all of us. And it's, and it's our commitment to green energy and, and is a, is a commitment to Mother Ocean, which is super important to me.
What I can do is paint the context behind why we decided against that. And then we can have a conversation about, about kind of where-
Yeah, please do, please do. Tell me about it, tell me about it.
Absolutely. I think one of the things that we wanted to be very thoughtful about in this logo was creating a brand identity that is just as appropriate for the residents of La Mesa as it is for the residents of Encinitas and San Diego. So we were, we were thinking really hard about trying to find something that has balance and has appropriateness, regardless of whether your, your flora and fauna are on mountains or in the ocean. So that's, that's something that we thought a lot about. And we felt if we were able to create customized versions of the logos for each of the city, which we just spoke about, and then make sure as we get through a given piece of collateral or a website page, that photography and that natural aspect of it, just because you don't see it here, doesn't mean it's not going to exist within the brand scheme. Like, like how we treat photography, you know, when we're creating brochures and fact sheets, we want to use gorgeous, natural imagery because not only is that San Diego, but that's also the source of the power. So, so we would argue all of this is kind of within balance of the overall sort of platform that you create. And that's kind of, that's how we landed where we are right now. Is not, let's reserve that for photography, which to be honest with you, the photography is going to be more gorgeous than any graphic that we put on this, on this logo anyway.
Okay, Uncle, you win. I like it. Those other things, those other things I talked about, I think are good, but the wave can, can live without it. And I expect to see it in the future. So that's great. Thank you. I love this stuff. You guys did a great job. I, I don't, you know, a lot of times this is so important to getting this out to our community in the way that they can understand what we're doing here. And this is concise, well thought out. And I applaud you guys' effort and I applaud the work that you've done and I love it.
Appreciate it. One thing I would like to add that I neglected to mention earlier is before the meeting over the past couple of days, we, we do have a partner who specializes in cultural competency and, and working with the Latinx community. We ran this logo as well as our messaging through her to make sure that the metaphors and symbolism make sense. All the colors are culturally competent and she gave it, she gave it a thumbs up. So, so just, you know, we've, we've started that vetting process.
Thank you. Sorry for bringing up the seventies dial stoves. That, I guess that may have not been part of the culture. Are you from the nineteen seventies and do you remember to, um? Yeah, exactly, exactly. Um, so I, I was just wanting to kind of, you know, slightly pick up on what Sean, you were saying right there and what, what Director West was saying about kind of morphing it in some way to, to be specific to his community. I think that's good, but I also think that, that like, we don't want to kind of confuse people as well. So we want to basically have a logo, a brand that, that, that people in Encinitas or La Mesa or Imperial Beach or San Diego or Tule Vista will feel, you know, warm and comfortable with. And that, that they'll start to kind of really feel like, you know, this is what it stands for and, and what it's about. And so I just want to, you know, kind of voice some concern about changing the logo depending on the area that you're at. I want, I want the logo, I want Imperial Beach residents to feel like they own this logo and this is their organization. But I, I want to, you know, I don't want to necessarily change the logo every time, you know, we go to a different community or neighborhood or anywhere.
That's a, that's a really great point. That's really important as we think about how we roll the logo out and how we introduce it. And is there a, is there a grace period of six months or a year where only one logo is used before anyone else has access to the other ones? What we would do coming out of this is create a comprehensive set of brand guidelines, which is basically step-by-step instructions for any of the partner cities or any of the stakeholders that want to use our brand. It's a, it's a list of the do's and don'ts. And what we've found when you're, when you give up your logo and other partners start to use it, you lose a little bit of control. And sometimes people break the rules. And what we've found is if it, if it, if we are able to do versions of this logo that still clearly come from the same place, but might be tailored to each of the cities, and we think that through, provide that as artwork ahead of time, that saves them from making the interpretation and doing what they think is best for the logo. So it's, it's almost like we're, we're arming them with an asset and also guardrails to make sure that they treat the brand how, how we feel it should be treated.
All right. Any other questions or comments for, for Sean or for Kim?
Yeah, Chair Moscow, this is Monica. Thank you so much for this presentation. First of all, I love the umbrella statement. I really do. I feel like the board members were really heard as far as what we wanted to convey through this process. So I, I think that that's a great foundation to build on. I really love that and how it was, how it was getting out. I also, I, I really appreciate going through the presentation to get to the logo. Because I, I didn't have that when I first looked at it, you know? And so that, you know, now I'm like, okay, I get it. What if we did add something, it might be a little too busy, you know? And so this way we can kind of, the simplicity, I think is good. But, but still very thoughtful when I say that. Simple, simple to the eye, but very thoughtful. And I think that we can definitely work with it. And so I'm looking forward to kind of seeing how we can, how we'll be able to build on it, what, what it will, will look like against different backgrounds. I, I think it's good. I think it's good. And so I appreciate all of your work. I, I think I have one more thing, but I don't remember. So it must not have been important. So thank you very much.
No, thank you.
All right, let's see if there's any other, there's any public comment on this item. Megan, are there, are there any members of the public that would like to speak to this item?
No, there's actually no more public comments for any items on the agenda.
Perfect. Thank you. Let's bring it back to the board. Are there motions, any motion that, to approve this?
Director West, so moved.
All right. All right, motion by Director West and seconded by Director Montgomery. And now we'll vote.
Board member West, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board member Montgomery, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board member Himmora, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair Moscow, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries. It's all board members voting yes.
All right, great. Well, thank you, Sean. Thank you, Kim. Great job. And, and I guess we will see you in the very near future.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Let's move to item number five, which is the last item on our agenda. Recommendation to approve employee handbook for the San Diego Community Power. And I believe, who has taken this item? Is Director of HR for Encinitas?
Right.
I am here. Can, can you hear me?
Yes, Tom.
Yes, sir. Good evening.
Joining us and this is your item.
It is. And this item is a recommendation to the board to approve really what is a basic employee handbook. And the purpose is to allow us or, you know, give us some guidance or, or structure as we go ahead and recruit and onboard the staff that, you know, we have two recruitments going on right now. And we have a new CEO. What it's not, it's not really an operations manual or anything like that, just a basic employee manual. And part of the recommendation also is to delegate to the CEO the authority to make modifications or add to it, such as operational matters that may come up. But also that would include in consultation with Board Counsel or General Counsel or the appropriate attorney would, would opine on that as well. And just one more thing on this, on this proposed employee handbook, I had the help of Nick Norvell at BBK to review it before I went to the board. So he had some good comments and we made those, those edits as well. So that's really the purpose of it. It's a, it's a basic handbook that allows us to move forward and start recruiting and onboarding staff.
Great. Thank you, Tom, for your help on this as well. Any questions for Tom? And any comments? All right. And there's no, there are no public comments on this item. And so I will move, move approval of this recommendation.
No America loves a crime story.
Director West, second.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second by Director West.
Board member Montgomery, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board member West, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board member Himmora, how do you vote? Chair Moscow, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries. It's all board members voting yes.
Great. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you and happy birthday.
Thank you. See you later.
See you.
All right, let's move to Director comments. Any, this is an opportunity for any Director, Board Directors to make any comments.
Just happy birthday.
Thank you, Monica.
I, I do have one.
Very special to, to share my birthday with you guys and be with you on my birthday. I did get a video today texted to me by, by Director West singing Happy Birthday. That actually made my-
I do have one thing I wanted to kind of update everybody on. So the, the Financial Risk Management Committee, we met. And per the JPA agreement, we are required to have a financial audit done annually. And since we have many minimal financial transactions in FY20, we expect the first audit to be very simple. But we solicited proposals from several firms and a committee recommended an accounting firm called Vicenti Brinkner. And they were the lowest bid at $6,000 and they're a California firm with a lot of CCA experience and they're a green business certified. So do the low dollar amount, no formal action or approvals needed by the board, but we wanted to get that done. So we've got our first audit is on the books coming to us. So that's a step in the right direction. So, but happy birthday to Joe.
All right, great. Thank you, Director West. All right, any reports by our General Counsel or our interim Executive Officer, Cody Hoven?
No, Mr. Chair, nothing to report.
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Great. All right, well, that, that concludes our meeting. And our next meeting is, our next regular meeting is October 22nd. So I will see you guys then 5:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you.[1793.73]